Good evening. Everyone, and welcome to the Amherst zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 15th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. In the event of a fire or other emergency, please follow the illuminated exit signs in this room and throughout Town Hall. The main exits are located at the front and the rear of the building. Do not use the elevator during an emergency. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the Town of Amherst official YouTube channel. Will the ZBA Secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Bray?
Present.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Present.
Member Phillips?
Present.
Member Parker?
Member Gergen?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are also joined this evening by zoning enforcement officer Daniel Latauski, attorney Steve Bengart, and town board member Jackie Berger. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting held on September 16th, 2025. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Member Schubert, second by Member Phillips. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Right that passes, five zero. Will now proceed to the hearing of appeals section of the agenda. When your item is called, please come forward to the podium. Write your name and address on the sheet provided and state your name and address into the microphone for the record. Each petitioner will have up to 15 minutes to present their application. There is a representative or attorney for the opposition. They will have up to 15 minutes to speak. All other speakers will be limited to one appearance for up to three minutes. After the petitioner's presentation, the board will have the opportunity to ask questions. Then I will open the public hearing and invite anyone wishing to speak on this item to come forward. The first item is 4845 Millersport Highway Upstate Tower Company LLC. Would the applicant please come to the podium?
Good evening, members of the zoning board, or zoning board of appeals. My name is Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Barclay Damon. I'm representing Upstate Tower with respect to the two towers proposed. The first one that the chair called is 4845 Millersport. We were here last month on the, for the September 16th meeting. At that time, you opened the public hearing, but the matter was adjourned for completion of seeker solicitation as well as county referral. Since that time, county referral has come back. They have said it's for local determination, and the only seeker solicitation response was from the New York State DEC. Their standard comments were in the letter, mostly to consider wetlands and floodplain. For both towers, the DEC response was the same, and our response is the same as well. The sites are both already impacted. It's on town-owned land, and we are not impacting any adjacent wetlands or operating within the floodplain. My colleague Dan presented last time. One of the key things I wanted to emphasize, and I think Technical Service Officer Richard Phillips spoke to this last time as well, these towers are both in partnership with the town. It's on town-owned land, and space on the tower is reserved for emergency response from the town. It's to enhance their coverage in an emergency situation, to ensure that their calls are not dropped when volume goes up. And then it also has, of course, the benefit for members of the public who are using cell service throughout the town. I too am a town resident. I live in one of the dead zones that's identified on the RF map, Exhibit 7 to each application. Look forward to these towers resolving some of the issues with that. I'm here to answer any questions from the board and public, and thank you for your time tonight.
Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant on 4845 Millersport Highway? None? Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? All right, with that, the motion is closed. Is there a motion from a board member? First, we have the negative deck. If you wish to speak, you have to come to the microphone and speak. Can I get a motion to reopen the hearing? Motion by Member Schubert?
Second.
Second by Member Phillips. All in favor say aye. Aye.
I just, just as a matter of procedure, are you now speaking just to Millersport, or are you speaking to both towers?
Right now, we are speaking about Millersport.
Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the audience wish to speak on this item? All right, we'll reclose this hearing for Millersports. Is there a motion for a negative declaration? Motion by Member Schubert, is there a second? Member Phillips, all in favor on the negative deck, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes, five zero. Is there a motion for approval on this item? Motion by Member Phillips, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes, five zero. The next item on tonight's agenda is 1042 North Forest Road.
Thank you. Ari Goldberg again for Upstate Tower. Greg, would you mind going down to the site plan on this one? Thank you. Okay, so want to talk more about this one a little bit. So this is at the North Forest property owned by the town. It's the Highway Department and Engineering Department. It's their land. The location is, if you want to go down one more, please. The location's right on the edge of the creek, land already impacted. It's pretty far setback from North Forest Road. All of that space owned by the town sets it back. And then if you keep going down one more, please. Skip this one. There we go. That's the design. So this is for the lattice tower. It's the same design as the other one, and I wanted to point out on this one, you can see space reserved for the, for the town emergency equipment at the 160 to 180 feet. That's part of what dictates the height, is our communications with the town identifying that this was the most appropriate location, and also it would help alleviate some of the concerns with coverage gap. So if we go down to the next slide, perfect. Blue is good, green is excellent. In the middle of the town, right near UB, Maple intersection with Hopkins, and just north of Sheridan, you can see there's no coverage whatsoever. But if we add this tower in, and you go to the next slide, you can see that that gap is filled, including with green right where the tower is, including excellent coverage. It's a key feature of the town. It's going to cover any improvements done at Westwood. It's an important project for both emergency services as well as citizens taking advantage of cellular services, which I think everyone uses. Is there one more slide on this? We can keep going down. This is the view from Noel Drive, Noel Drive, approximately, I think it's about 1,500 to 2,000 feet away. You can see it between the trees. Then if you go down one more, please. That's the view from the par three golf course on Maple. Keep going down. And then I want to draw your attention, same criteria on both towers, but I'm going to call out 508, the North Forest one on this. Town code Section 67 sets forth your standards for review. It's the same standards you considered when you just approved Buff 513. Certain criteria are, are met because of what the tower, how it's designed, its partnership with the town. We are on already impacted land. We are enhancing coverage, as we saw on that RF map, and we're enhancing emergency radio coverage for town emergency personnel. I just want to make sure that those things are made clear, because I understand this tower was previously approved. It was not constructed, because the height didn't make sense for what was proposed. Additionally, there wasn't that town partnership that we have now. I know, I think, Mr. Gergen, you asked that question at last meeting. I wanted to make sure that response was made. I think with that, same position, I'm here to answer board questions, and I assume there are public comments on this one.
And so, just so I understand this correctly, the uppermost part of the tower will be used for emergency communications?
Yeah.
So would it be a fair statement to say that if there is not the emergency communications component to this, the tower might, could, could possibly be lower?
That's correct. It's the inclusion of town emergency radio communications that drives the height.
All right, does any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Or is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Please come to the podium.
Mary Ann Hashberg, 1075 North Forest Road. For 30-plus years, we've seen many beautiful sunsets over the area of the Amherst Highway Department. In the application, my view seemingly is photo one on page 211 of 240, and this proposed visual eyesore will be my view shed out our front window and yard. Pictures in total are very disingenuous, far reaching beyond the immediate surrounding very residential area. No shots taken from the view of either of the high-end patio home developments in line, none from across the creek, including one neighbor about 300 feet away behind trees that are about to lose their leaves. Some history was left out. In years past, many residents of the surrounding area stood in vehement opposition to a proposed 180-foot telecommunications facility here at that time needed to lift highway and engineering. A contentious time and topic in the town, well beyond our area, that resulted in a stellar, well-thought-out telecommunications facility law written with purpose and protections for the town and its residents. Now, it's two big carrots being dangled. As proposed, there would be three lattice dinosaur structures on one town site in close proximity to each other. The law is intended for Amherst to do better than that. The current proposal completely disregards the law and disrespects the surrounding area, residential area. Some of the concerns were and remain decrease in property values, especially for those in direct line with, of the visual blight, and resulting in future challenges to property assessments. Previous 101-foot fall zone landed on private property. This proposal is for 184 feet in total with a lightning rod. Prone to lightning strikes, even if grounded, electrical charge can flow to the point of least resistance, such as the wet ground, and arc across large distances. In this area are town buildings, employees, vehicles, town and personal, and significantly the town gas pumps. Per FCC licenses, what heights are documented for fire and police. Potential conflicting coverage maps information we experienced in the past with discrepancies prevented, presented in other applications for different locations proposed. Adverse impact of life on electrical appliances for surrounding residents. Several of these situations did and could put the town in legal jeopardy. Amherst should uphold its code. optionally, one stealth communications facility of reasonable height that accommodates all town needs would be more appropriate. What should not happen, and what did just happen, is one of these two telecommunications facilities be approved separately, as it is setting precedent for the other to follow in kind. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I wasn't able to end the last hearing. I was on a plane coming back from Colorado, did not get the notice until the next day, and the meeting had already occurred. If you know me, which you don't, if you look at me, you see many of your other residents, because we have spoken for our neighborhood on many occasions over more than a decade, protecting that area, and I don't plan to stop protecting it now. Thank you very much.
Is anyone else here to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Robert Hashberg.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure. I'm Robert Hashberg. This is my wife who spoke. It's also out my front window. First thing, we're, a previous hearing, a resident brought in a map from Clearance, and the dead, or low coverage zone shown on the map was fine on the Clearance map, but on the Amherst map, it was, well, I challenge every board member to go to that. That's my neighborhood. Go to that area with your phone, through your signal. I guarantee you, you have no problem with your signal. There's no low coverage on that area. That's, that's just made up. I'm sorry. My apologies to the lawyers. 180-foot lattice tower is unheard of in most parts of the country now. It's old technology. It's old thinking. There's different ways to handle this. If you find a reliable tower company and cell companies that would work with you to limit the heights of these things, it's, my wife said, it's a dinosaur. They're going to build a dinosaur out of my front window, and in a few years, I'm sure most countries, you won't see these anymore. Pretty much, pretty much, I mean, there's plenty to say, but I think that's, she covered a lot, so I'm going to stick with that. Last thing I say is, go Bills. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would the applicant please come to the podium? Have you any opportunity to respond to, to any comments that you deem appropriate to respond to?
I do agree that the bill, go Bills. That's the one I agree on. The other things I want to respond to is, the RF maps are submitted by certified engineering documents. So I understand that anecdotal evidence may be difference if you're in the, the local area. I offered my own anecdotal evidence of the dead zone that I live in, in the town, but the, this is what the certified RF map says. This is what it shows. I don't really have any additional response to that. With respect to the height, and I think Chairman Bray, you asked the question correctly, the height is dictated by our partnership with the town. 160 to 180 is reserved for town emergency antennae and communication devices, and it's that partnership that dictates the height. There's another thought that, and I think we did explain this in Exhibit 16, which is our code compliance memorandum, that shorter towers are going to result in more towers. So we have to balance the prolifer, the, I think I'm going to get it right, the proliferation of towers versus one central location at this specific height. The lattice tower was also designed in partnership with the town. It allows for four different carriers here, or three different carriers and, and the town personnel. I disagree on, on the property value comment. I think there are incredible number of factors that go into property values, and as people come to look for properties in the town of Amherst, not having cell coverage outside of your home is also an important factor to consider, and this resolves that. With respect to precedent, your, your town attorney could advise you as well, but each project is reviewed in its own individual capacity. It is the specific matter before you. It's not like a Supreme Court of the United States where there's stare decisis, where there's this binding precedent when you make a decision. When something comes before the zoning board, whether it's a shed variance or a fence variance, it's, you review the variance based on that property in the neighborhood at play. Just because 180-foot lattice tower would be permitted at 1042 North Forest doesn't mean that the 485 Millersport Highway Tower should have been approved. It's individual criteria for each tower, so there's no binding precedent that the board should be weary of. I think with that, I'll let the board ask any follow-up questions and await your decision.
I have, I have no further questions. Does any member of the board have a question or comment or?
I do. I would just like to see on a map if we could, 1075 North Forest Road in reference to this property. Location-wise. 1075 North Forest.
Excuse me. You, you, you had your opportunity.
1075. You might be able to see the edge of it on Slide 12. That's up, up a few. Okay. Want to say, well, I don't know for sure. This isn't from the GIS map, so I can't see the parcels. Do you know, can I ask them a question? Are you adjacent from the?
If you have a photo, looking down across the street, that's our house. If you go to the photo, that's 401, of, of the news of the tower.
Sure.
One?
Okay.
So this would be?
That's roughly 1,000 feet from their house.
That would be the view from their house.
Yep, and you can also see the tower, the, an existing tower to the left there. You can see an array of other existing infrastructure, including power lines. There's another.
No, I know. I just, yeah, I just want to see the tower.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I have a question about the, the RF maps that you referenced. So what goes into the creation of that? Because it sounds like there's a real dispute as to whether or not this is a dead zone. So what type of analysis goes into the creation of that map? Do you know?
I'm going to caveat my response by not mentioning. My understanding that, sorry about that. My understanding is the RF engineers take a look at the strength of their existing signals, and they try to plot it out based on the strength of the signal at their existing tower. So they're able to measure what their, how their tower's projecting, and then they cut it out based on the distances. Perhaps it looks different in reality based upon size of buildings, topography, things along those lines, but my understanding is, they take the tower, they measure the signal strength from that tower, and then they plot it on the chart.
But it, who's an engineer who did this, correct?
Correct.
And that, that's where I was going with it. So it's not necessarily a complete and total dead zone. You can still get some cell coverage in there. It's just a weak signal. Is that correct?
That's fair to say. There's some, yeah, some nuances within how this 30,000-foot view from someone behind a desk might see it if they go out there, but nonetheless, they've identified a low signal zone or something equivalent to a dead zone, and that's how they do the site selection, too.
And to Chairman Bray's point, it wasn't, it's not just your say-so that this is a dead zone. It was based on engineering studies and analysis, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there any other?
I will say, too, I believe we excerpted these RF maps for the presentation. If, for the materials in front of you, if you turn your attention to Exhibit 7, Verizon also submitted some RF information to help with the decision as well. We called out these because of the visual component helps identify, but there is additional information even within your application itself.
Is one, one more question. I assume that the town clerk noticed the, all the residents of both condo developments adjacent to the site? Sorry? Last month? Okay, so they were all noticed. There are two condo developments adjacent to this property. All right, just want to make sure they were notified and had opportunity to speak.
For the record, if you could say it into the mic, so that it's part of the record, please. Bein.
Yes, I did notice last month at the original meeting, and I actually expanded the parameter to 600 feet, so that makes sure that everybody in the area would get a notice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? All right, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion? Wait, first, we have a negative deck. Correct. Is there a motion on a, on a negative deck?
I'll move it.
Motion by Member Schubert, second by Member Phillips. All in favor of the negative, negative deck, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The negative deck passes, five zero. Is there a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move it.
For approval?
Approval.
Motion by Member Schubert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen. Who do you get a roll call on this?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Yeah.
Member Parker?
Yeah.
Member Gergen?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, the third item on tonight's agenda is 1040 or 1,001 North French Road. Ms. Flummerfeld?
Aye. My name's Laura Flummerfeld. I'm applying for the special use permit.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm applying for the special use permit for the ADU at my residence. Up on the screen, you'll see I have an existing house. I'm taking 300 square feet away, the actual living room, and doing an addition of approximately 500 square feet off the back. And I've applied and been blessed with the pilot program to receive grant monies, and the addition's going to be completely accessible for myself going forward in the future, which I'll need. As you can see in the second little blip, we're trying to keep everything in alignment with the original style of the house. This portion right here is the side where the driveway is, the second little blip down. It's going to be a lower deck off the back, so that if, going down the future, I need a wheelchair, chair ramp, I can easily have that added. The very first diagram at the top, one of the five windows in the front will be removed, and that will be the front entranceway into the living room, and then there will be a petition where the original front door then would be part of the original structure of the house.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? All right, does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
I have a question for Mr. Yul Latauski, which I asked before, but I'll ask again if it's okay. What is our role here? If this, is this an automatic approval? Is there any reason why we wouldn't approve something like this?
Your, your role is somewhat perfunctory.
Okay.
We have recently amended our zoning ordinance to allow ADUs in a, a less restricted manner. The town is always allowed an accessory dwelling unit by special permit since 1976. At that point in time, it was limited to those individuals that were related to the household, who were 65 years of older or who had a disability. We removed those provisions. They were viewed as potentially unconstitutional, and with the governor's new program, we started participating in the pilot program with our community development director, Lori Stillwell. We took incremental steps in getting here. We feel that it is still your role to allow for a public discourse on these requests, so that the neighbors know that they're, that they may be impacted by having an additional dwelling unit. There are safeguards, however. The request is not transferable at time of sale. Someone wishes to reestablish it, they would have to come back here. If there are future complaints from neighbors because of nuisances created by this new tenant, they could bring them to the building commissioner, who can ask that you reopen the hearing to, to allow for reform to, to have that addressed.
So basically, it's to give the neighbors notice, but there's really no reason for us to ever deny this?
Not unless there's something totally out of character with the request, but it's, it's fairly a routine request, but you have a role to, to regulate these.
Okay, thank you very much, Yul Latauski. All right.
All right, we'll close the hearing then. Is there a motion? Do we have a negative deck? If we don't, okay.
This is deemed a Type 2 action.
Okay. All right, then a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
Motion by Member Schubert, second by Member Parker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is 6 Telfair Drive. Mr. and Ms. Straight, please come to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kristen Straight, here with my husband Philip. We're here tonight asking for a variance for our playhouse shed structure in our yard at 6 Telfair Drive. It's going to be small, eight by 10 feet. We are asking that it be placed 17 feet from the property line, where the zoning for our exterior side yard on a corner lot calls for 30 feet. It's not a substantial request. It's small. It's within our enclosed backyard fence. In the application packet, you can kind of see that it's in our backyard fence there. It's not going to create any kind of undesirable change. It is 17 feet from the property line, but it is also 37 feet from the street, so it does not really stick out much at all. It's not going to impact views, sightlines at all. We take great pride in our home. Our curb appeal is super important to us. The materials are going to match the quality and aesthetic of our primary dwelling, our house. Also, we chose this location because it's really the only spot that makes sense in our yard. Everywhere else that would be okay, by the way, our rules are with setbacks, it would either be removing vegetation that's already established, or it would just be incredibly random. This is nice. It's tucked to the side. It's not impacting our neighbors in any way. It's not impacting the functionality of our own yard in any way. My final note is, should you choose to approve the request, it won't be setting any new precedence. When we walk around our neighborhood, we see many sheds in exterior side yards of corner lots, many of which are bigger than what we're asking for and closer even to the property line than what we're asking for. That red line is kind of to show like what would be usable of our yard, and there's really just no good spot to stick it. That wouldn't be kind of funky.
All right, thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion? Motion by Member Schubert. Second by Member Parker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is Main Street Energy LLC for 6653 Main Street.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Wilson. I'm with Mike Prinzy. We are here on behalf of Energy Mark in regards to a, an EV, electric vehicle charger project that we're looking to install for this customer. If you go to the next slide, please. We're looking for, so Energy Mark is a renewable energy supplier company. They have solar on their building right now. They're looking to install EV chargers for their, for their, themselves, their customers, and their employees at their location. So we're asking for relief from the setback required from the middle of Main Street over to where the placement of the chargers will be. If you go to the next slide. This is a depiction of where the chargers will be placed. Can you continue on? I'm sorry, go back. Apologies. The proposed location, so we've chosen this location because of the proximity to the existing service that's in place already for the utility, which is just down behind the building. Also, on this side of the parking lot, we're not encroaching on the sidewalk that is adjacent to the building, and there are not enough adjacent spaces in the front of the building to accommodate the number of spaces that they would like to use for electric vehicle chargers. This is the setback that we received from, the setback requirement that we received from, we were working with Dan on this process as well. So we do not see any undesirable change for placing the chargers at this location. There's no adverse impact to the physical or environment, environmental conditions for this project site, and it's not substantial. We don't deem it as a substantial effect on the surrounding businesses or roadways for granting this request for relief from the requirement for the setback.
All right, thank you. Is anyone, any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion? Motion by Member Gergen. Second by Member Phillips. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is 3416 Deer Lake Drive. MJ Peterson?
Good evening, town board. So what we're-
Could you just state your name and address into the microphone?
I'm sorry, Christopher J. Tucker, 8818 Lakeshore Road Angle in New York. That said, I'll be speaking for MJ Peterson on the sign, actually two signs, that we want to put up at our newly constructed project. There's two entrances. There's a major entrance and there's a minor entrance. So we have two signs that we're proposing and looking for the area variance for those. That said, Chestnut Ridge Road in the evening is quite dark. It's not streetlit. And the idea of people going down that road looking for things have been a problem. Our tenants have indicated to us that it's hard to see exactly where you are, see where the signs are, see where the entrance to the driveways are. So these are nice little signs out in front, typical to what you see in other apartment complexes in the area that will allow us to go into and find the entrances to the property pretty easy. There's two different designs. The reason for the two different signs, designs, as I said earlier, the main one, which is the one we're looking at now, is closer to the sweet home end. It's closer to where we have our clubhouse. It's closer to where we have a lot of tenants coming in and their guests to use the clubhouse. So both of them would be out by the street, similar to other signs in the area. Going down Chestnut Ridge Road, as I indicated, is, is pretty challenging at night, and to find the places as you go down that are not well-lit is a little bit of an issue, a safety problem, and it's a traffic problem as well.
Thank you. Mr. Yulotowski, could we go to the first sign that was shown with the two poles? Does that meet the requirements of the sign? It looks to me that we've denied, or we've had to approve signs that weren't on the ground before, so I just wanted-
It does. For this type of subdivision identification sign, it does meet the requirements. It does exceed, again, they're seeking greater than 20 square feet. We are actively looking at amending the ordinance because it's 20 square feet combined. In this case, they're penalized because they have a double-sided sign.
Yeah, this sign would be 40 total, 20 on one side and 20 on the other. Very, or the requirement as it is now would be that our sign would be approximately three foot by three foot if it were on both sides.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
I guess just for the, there's a ground sign, which I guess is what we normally require. And I guess this, the other sign is further into the development.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, okay.
Yes, if we go back to the map, I'll just show you, one is on one end where the red mark is. That would be the larger landmark sign, because our clubhouse is right just to the backside of that. And down the other end is where the sign is, and that's for the smaller entrance.
And the major sign would be illuminated and the minor sign would not, right?
A ground illuminated on the minor one, illuminated on the sign itself on the major one, so it can be easily found at night driving down Chestnut Ridge Road.
Thank you. Is there any more questions? Any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing then. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Member Phillips?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda is 124 Garden Parkway. Todd, Danny, and Sean Hopkins?
Yes, good evening, Chairman Bray and members of the zoning board of appeals. Sean Hopkins, on behalf of the applicant. We're here this evening seeking a setback variance for a property located at 124 Garden Parkway. Greg, if you want to go next slide. This is an arrow photograph. It is important note, this backs up to the town's bike path. And you'll see we have an adjoining property on 114 Garden Parkway and a larger parcel located to the east. So this property was purchased in late 2024 out of foreclosure. At that point, it was completely vacant, had not been touched in probably a decade, was strewn with garbage, debris, et cetera, et cetera. Many people said it needed to be knocked down, but instead a decision was made to renovate it and include an addition. It is important note, the site is ZO4, which would expressly permit a two-family home. So in connection with the project, go back, Greg. There's a copy of the existing survey. There was an existing garage on this house, but it was falling down into horrible condition. It was literally filled with Newsweek magazines from 1974. So a decision was made to knock down that garage and replace it with a more traditional, larger garage. It would have a double door. That's what we've proposed. So the setback of the existing garage was five feet, whereas the setback of the proposed addition is 3.25 feet. It is important note, in terms of the investment that's being made in this property, it's approximately $600,000 to $700,000. It's also important note that we've spoken with the adjoining property owner at 114 Garden Parkway. She could not be here this evening, but she's very pleased with the efforts that have been made to date, and she advised us that we could advise the board that she has absolutely no opposition to the variance. It's also important note, we're not proposing any windows on that side of the garage, of the addition. Next slide. There's the floor plan that was developed by Dave Sutton and his team at Sutton Architecture. You can see the proposed addition, which is in the back left corner there. We're accommodating a much larger and nicer driveway in front. Next slide. So obviously, this is governed by the balancing test and the five criteria set forth in New York State Town Law, Section 267 B3B, which requires you, on the one hand, to balance the benefits that will be received by the applicant if the requested relief is granted, and weigh those against any resulting detriments to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Here, we think it's quite clear, number one, this will result in positive changes to the character of the neighborhood. It's not a substantial variance. There is no alternatives to relief that we're requesting that are feasible for us to pursue in terms of whether it will have adverse impacts in environmental or physical conditions, which is the next slide. It is a Type 2 action, or number four, it is a Type 2 action pursuant to seeker. And then the final criteria, which is relevant but cannot be determinative, is whether or not this is a result of a self-created difficulty. We acknowledge the fact that the proposed addition will be closer than what was previously there, but in order to make a functional and substantial investment in this property, again, in the nature of $600,000 to $700,000, it was determined that this variance was necessary. So if there's any questions, either myself or Mr. Danny respectfully would ask, or provide the opportunity to ask them. Otherwise, we would ask the grant the requested relief. Thank you.
Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
I have two questions.
Sure.
Number one, is this garage already up?
The foundation is poured, but the garage is not up.
Okay, there's a survey. Survey data, September 25th, 2024 shows, okay, that shows the foundation, so it's-
It actually, only a portion of it is poured so far.
Okay.
But no, the garage is not up. The goal would be to complete this project by January of 2026.
And the neighbor at 114, you said, consents?
Yes, absolutely, consents. Um-
Todd, what's her name?
Marco, is her name.
Ergo.
I don't know her last name.
Marco consents.
I mean, she's been involved since day one, so, yeah, she's, and we've actually made some improvements to her property, including removing dead tree branches, clean up the yard, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And the relief you're asking is because of the way that the design of the garage requires that extra-
Yeah, so the existing garage is an, was an old-school, single-bay garage. The new garage, again, given the investment of $600,000 to $700,000, will accommodate two vehicles.
Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? With that, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Member Gergen? Second by Member Phillips. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is 32, 38, and 44 Glenn Meadow Drive, Essex Homes.
Good evening once again, Sean Hopkins, and on behalf of Essex Homes of Western New York. Here this evening in connection with a request for area variances for three contiguous lots located at 22, 38, and 44 Glenn Meadow Drive. Next slide. This site is approximately 15.57 acres in size. It was rezoned by the town board approximately five years ago, and we're finally reaching the end of the build-out of this particular subdivision. Next slide. So the three lots in question this evening are highlighted there in yellow. They're actually sublots 2, 3, and 4. We've previously come in front of this board for lots 5 through 14, which are highlighted in orange, and we're seeking the exact same relief that you've previously granted, which is as follows. Number one, rear yard setback of nine feet, and then maximum building coverage of 48%. All other aspects of the homes to be built on these three lots will comply with the requirements of the zoning code. Next slide. So when we planned this subdivision about five years ago, a concerted effort was made to avoid wetlands. You can see those large green areas. Those were the wetlands that were subject to the jurisdiction of the United States Army Corps of Engineers. That required us to push the whole subdivision to the edge of the site. It's not what we would traditionally do, but we were forced to do that because of that constraint. We also did incorporate a potential future extension of Young's Road, and the town board did issue a negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quaterview Act in connection with its rezoning of the site. Next slide. It's a copy of the previous resolution adopted by this board on May 19th. And the second bullet point on the left is most important, because this was the condition that we volunteered and you imposed, that any, any portion of the homes on these three lots that exceeds or is less than the 20-foot setback shall be limited as follows: to a single-story enclosed sunroom, a covered porch, or an A grade patio. So to the extent we exceed 40% lot coverage, or we go closer than 20 feet to the rear property line, it must consist of that exact limitation. Next slide. That's the second decision that you made. Next slide. It is important note that because there is an adjoining property owner at 1745 Dodge Road, we also voluntarily at that point in time agreed to install a six-foot fence for a length of 300 feet all the way from the house back to their shed, which I've highlighted in blue. You actually did wind up imposing that as a condition, but it was offered voluntarily by the applicant, Essex Homes of West New York. Why that's important? All three of these lots are behind that existing fence. Next slide. This is just to show you the lot depths, and again, the effort that was made to push this subdivision as far away as possible from the wetlands. Next slide. That's showing you, so Essex has five different home designs from this subdivision. And the one that has turned out has been the most popular is what's known as Eastbrook. It happens to be the largest of them. I think the price point is about $750,000. And what they have found was not anticipated five years ago, that nearly every prospective purchaser wants that sunroom or wants a covered patio in the back. And you can see that dimension. It's only 12 feet by 18 feet, and it has been very well received by prospective purchasers. Next slide. That's a copy of that plan, the specific details. Next slide. Obviously, this is governed by the balancing test and the fight as well. Again, I want to reiterate that these three- Again, I want to reiterate that these three lots are located directly behind the fence that's been installed. There has been a change in market conditions, more people working from home, et cetera, et cetera, that's driving the demand for the single-story sunroom on the back of these homes. Next slide. And then in terms of the five criteria, the benefits are quite clear. All Essex is trying to do is satisfy the demand from prospective purchasers. It is the exact same relief that you've previously granted. We've installed that fence. It really is not substantial in the grand context of this overall subdivision. So with all that being said, we would ask, if you go to the next slide, one more, next slide, that you approve the requested relief, however importantly, that you impose the exact same condition that you've previously imposed as follows: the portion of any homes that exceeds a lot coverage of 40% on lots 2 through 4 shall be limited to a single-story sunroom, a single-story room, a covered porch, or an A grade patio, or a combination thereof. If you have any questions, I would welcome the opportunity to address some.
Uh, Member Schubert, do you have a question?
Why didn't you include, I think I know the answer. Why didn't you include these three lots initially when you asked for relief?
Because we actually thought there would be more variation in terms of the choices among the homes. It's actually quite surprising in 2025 with higher interest rates, doubling of prices, that people again and again are picking the most expensive model. It's good for the tax base.
The demand has dictated.
Demand has dictated it.
Change. Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone have other questions for the applicant? All right, any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Just come to the podium.
If I sound nervous, I am. I'm not used to getting up in front of people. However, this does directly affect myself and my husband. I'm Pam Curcio. My husband Brad. We are the owners of 1745 Dodge Road, which is directly adjacent to this subdivision. So if you're looking at the map, where you see you're facing the road, we'd be on the left side. Our property, we own 1745 and 1755. We have four acres. Our property line goes from the beginning of the street, just as the same as the subdivision, all the way to the creek where the last lot is. So at our property line, we have endured, well, there's down to three lots left, but four, well, 29 patio homes being built next to our home, 14 of them being right on our line. When this project started, we were a little late to the game. It was 2020, and the first time we came out to the building, we couldn't even get into the building. And then when we finally came in, we met with the, a lady in the planning department, I believe, very nice. She brought out the charts. She showed us the setbacks, the landscape, and we left with some assurance that it was well thought of. The decisions were made to benefit Essex, to benefit the town, and to benefit the remaining residents that live here and pay taxes. So we felt good about that. So we'll move forward. For a couple of years later, we're walking our dog down to the creek as we usually do. It's about 900 feet. And we noticed the last patio home was much closer to the property line than what she said. And we came back in for a second visit, and she pulled out the maps and she said, "Well, there was a meeting and there, a variance came in so that they could build a sunroom on the back. You should have gotten a letter for that." And I, I never got a letter for it. I don't know. Maybe it was sent. Maybe it was lost. I don't know. I never received it. I would have come to that meeting. But the, it was already built, or the foundation was already in, so we proceeded on with our life. And I want to note that we're also not been involved at all with, we have nothing against development. We realize development started long before we moved to the neighborhood 29 years ago, and it's probably going to be going long after we're gone, so that's not a problem for us. We haven't been a part of that group with Mr. Pitts and all the, all the drama and all the business that comes into these meetings. We've minded our own business. We've kept our chin up. We've been neighborly. We've agreed, they did give us, or they put a fence on their property between our lines. However, we've had to, there's the fence. We still have eight more patio homes past that fence. And we've also had to kind of play neighborly but patrol, because people's grandchildren started, you know, they only have eight feet of, or 20 feet, 10 feet of grass. They're starting to move on to our land. They were running behind our barn, playing hide and seek. So our life has changed significantly with this. So moving forward, Sunday afternoon, by the grace of God and my technology of a Ring camera, I see a lady run up to my door, stuff something in the door and take off, and it, lo and behold, it's the letter for this meeting, so I didn't have much time to think about it, but I have concerns, because the three, the three homes that are in this last stretch, the three lots, this is where 95% of our outside time is, and it's always been that way. On that side of our home is our patio, our porch, our hot tub, the backyard, immediate backyard where you have friends over and grill and so forth. That's all right there. And to wait, it's kind of a little bit of a slap in the face to wait till the end of the stretch here, but wait, we want more, you know, 20 feet's not enough. We want to come in nine feet. And yes, there's a fence there, but with the way they're raised, and a fence, they're that close to us. I mean, we can't even have a private conversation on our porch, because now they're going to come nine feet closer. I mean, you, it's been, you know, when people say it's been a day? It's been a lot of days. From the wood chipper next to our porch to, they took down the, clearing the lots, changed the whole windbreak towards our property, our own trees on the bordering line, fell on, crushed our deck. It's been a lot for us. I don't think it's necessary. I think the three homes could be built without a sunroom, without a raised deck beyond the porch. I don't think they need to have all that, and I'll tell you why. About, maybe a, I guess a year ago, two lots down, there's a white patio home that was built. I don't know if it was any particular owner. And it went on the market. It had two open houses. It was the end of the winter, and it sold that quick. Their sales girl that they have is amazing. She's been selling these houses right and left. And just the location alone, I mean, look where this property is. They don't need to add, these are beautiful patio homes. When they first started, they were in the upper 300s. Now there's some that have sold as high as $880,000. These are upscale patio homes. And I don't understand why they have to offer somebody bells and whistles over bells and whistles when the standard was already set to be fair to everyone, not just, not just Essex, not just the town, but for us too. It's been a lot. And I don't understand why this has to be. I think they should set back the way it started, the way it was decided, the way they thought was fair, and it should stay that way. And they'll sell them, just like the White House. They'll build them, they'll sell them. Why? Because one, it's the town of Amherst. Two, you're in the best school district, and you're in walking distance. My husband taught at North for 35-plus years. My daughter is an administrator in the district. It's great schools. 10 minutes to the airport. You're right there, you know, it's just the perfect location. They aren't going to have any trouble selling these. And if the person isn't happy with the decision that the town made five years ago, they can go build a patio home somewhere else. Essex has beautiful lots and, they have beautiful lots in, where's the town? Over by the falls out that way. And they, and you've got Rono Homes are building beautiful patio homes in Amherst. I mean, they don't have to have all that. So I say the town should stick to their original plan that was fair for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Mr. Hopkins, I'll give you the courtesy to respond.
So the previous speakers are both very nice, and there's no doubt that the character of that neighborhood changed as a result of the subdivision. It was designated for this project, was approved for this project. And again, we did try and avoid this relief for these three particular lots, but it's turned out as conditions have changed, that there's simply demand for this product type. I think the condition that we're proposing minimizes any potential impact. And again, even the fence that was being sold, Essex is not looking for credit, but that was done voluntarily to ensure that that backyard area, they have a very deep lot between the back of their house and their shed, again, a considerable distance, that six-foot fence is there, and I think that does provide adequate protection. But I, of course, do respect the opinion of the previous speaker.
All right. Sorry, Bert, you had your opportunity to speak. We'll close the hearing. Is there a motion for approval or denial?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Member Schubert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen. Could we get a roll call on that?
Can I ask Mr. Chairman that you go through the five criteria as well to support your decision of denial?
Member Schubert?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They're posted on the draft resolution.
Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. The answer to that is yes.
Can you go a little deeper so that we have a record to follow for later?
Yes, because as we've heard the comment from the adjoining neighbor, it's a matter of privacy. This addition is closer to the lot line, and as far as I can determine, it's probably create a nuisance, and it's a matter of privacy. Two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible, so on and so forth. The answer is no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, I'd say yes to that. It's bringing this, this unit nine feet closer to the line. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, it again is nine feet closer to the line, and it infringes on the privacy of the neighbor. Whether alleged difficulty was self-created, and absolutely yes.
Could we get a roll call vote on this, please?
Chairman Bray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schubert?
No.
Member Phillips?
No, you're saying no to a denial?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll start over. I'm going to start over. Chairman Bray?
Yes to the denial.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes to the denial.
Member Phillips? Member Parker? Member Gergen?
Yes.
The denial was passed for one. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is 3001 Hopkins Road. Mr. Madioli?
Hello, I'm Alexandria Bennett. This is my husband Kyle. We reside at 2991 Hopkins Road. We're here for Charles Madioli, our neighbor at 3001 Hopkins Road. We're looking to get a variance. We are putting in a septic system. And as of right now, the regulations state it needs to be 10 foot off of the property line. We are going through the program across the street from Hopkins, or right across the street from our property is, is it Black Creek? Ransom Creek. We're part of a grant, or we're getting a $10,000 grant in order to get the septic system installed. But because of where we had a pool installed, and where we want to put the septic system would be, he does firewood for our wood burning stove, and when he drives a truck in the backyard, we would like to move the septic system over to the left a little bit. But with the rules and regulations, we can't do that because of our property line. We have a really good relationship with our neighbor, and he offered to let us purchase the back half of his property, so then we don't have to worry about the property line and where the placement would be.
Thank you. Mr. Yulotowski, could they do anything new on this lot as a result if we, if we approve this variance request? I don't want any unintended consequences.
So if, if you should approve this, we are going to require that this acquisition be combined with the principal parcel. That would be our, our recommendation that you place a condition that it be combined, because we could not allow for a parcel split that would leave a lot without any road frontage. The only other concern would be for the original parcel, it'll be less than an acre, and that's the request for the variance. I don't know if there's any proposed condition to allow for the use of such parcel after it's conveyed, should the parcel with less than an acre also need septic in the future should their system fail. So that's something to consider.
Would it be possible to move that dividing line so that the original, you don't have enough room to make that lot an acre? The neighbor's lot.
The, the neighbors desire this much of an acquisition, but it certainly could be a smaller acquisition.
Sure. So where the pool is, there's like a dark line where the green and the yellow line meet, so that's the back of our fence.
Man, there's a pointer there that you can use.
Okay, so this is the back of our fence right now. He's in his upper 80s, and we already maintain a good distance of this property. My husband cuts the lawn, you know, does the tree work and stuff. When things fall, he'll take care of it for him. So we're looking to essentially, our septic system is here right now, but because of the placement of the pool, we're looking to go outside of the fence line, or it has to go outside of the fence line. So when he's driving in the back to get firewood, we don't want to be driving over any lines. And essentially, right now, it would have to go here. We would like to move it over closer to the property line. And then we don't have an issue if we're able to obtain, you know, this section of the lot. I do understand that you would like to maintain an acre of property for the area. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different properties on Hopkins Road in Shellis that are also considered agricultural that are less than an acre.
Is there any more questions for the applicant?
The parcel across the street, is that also part of the parcel?
So we own this. This is part of our existing property. Mr. Madioli owns this. I don't need this. This does no use to me, so. So his lot would be like 60, correct?
Is there any more questions for the applicant? Is there any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing then. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Member Schubert. Is there any conditions to the, with the motion for approval? Was to combine the two lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have no problem combining the two lots. I already have it in motion to get a survey and a real estate attorney.
I don't know if any was written on there.
And Dan, would you see a problem with this being less than an acre, is that?
The only concern I would pose is should the landowner who's selling off his rear parcel may not have land for a failing septic system, him or herself?
Where his house is placed, they've determined that he would be eligible to get a septic system either in, over to the far left of his property, closer to the gas line. And he wouldn't have an issue getting a septic system where his house is because it's so much further up than where my house is located.
I think just still combining then.
Okay, then with the condition that the lot be combined.
Can you, it's kind of hard to hear you.
I'm sorry. So the only condition would be that the two lots then be combined to one?
Correct, yep, that would be fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gergen, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. You're opposing?
Yeah.
All right. That passes four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 21 Forest Stream Drive, Mr. Hopkins.
Good evening once again, Sean Hopkins. Also with me is Dave Sutton from Sutton Architecture. Next slide. We're here this evening in connection with the request for an area variance for the property located at 21 Forest Stream, which happens to be my house. I would note for the record before I proceed any further, I have submitted three support letters from nearby residents. None of those three residents are in attendance this evening, but I do want to express gratitude for them providing those letters. Here's an aerial photograph of the property on Forest Stream, just to acclimate everyone. Forest Stream itself is cul-de-sac. And then on the top is Ree Street, which generally bisects in an east-to-west direction. Next slide. Survey of the piece of property, all the way at the back is a ditch. Considering where this is, a very deep property, approximately 300 feet in depth. And originally, when I purchased this house 20 years ago, it had a carport on the back of the house, an attached carport that could barely fit one vehicle at best. Next slide. So in 2019 and then again in 2021, because of COVID, you did grant area variance to allow the height of the garage to be 22 feet versus what's permitted by the zoning code, which is 20 feet. Next slide. The copy of the plans that were prepared by Dave and his team at Sutton Architecture. It turns out the height of the garage as finished is 24 feet 4 inches. So two feet 4 inches taller than the variance that was previously granted by this board. First, I do want to note, and this was done mistakenly, without my knowledge, the building permit itself that was issued by the building department a couple of years ago allowed 23 feet. I'm not sure why, but it did, it was simply an oversight or a mistake. Next slide. And this is a color photograph showing the approximate 22-feet point, 22-foot mark. And then the additional question that you may have, of course, is okay, so the building permit was at 23 feet, but nonetheless, you are at 24 feet 4 inches. I'm going to actually let Dave address that particular question.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Sutton from Sutton Architecture. So Sean had asked me as a follow-up to, we did the original drawings for this project. And a follow-up in when he identified that the house or the structure was built in excess of the allowable based on the variance. He asked me to look at this for two reasons, one of which was to ask as to why it deviated from the plans. And from investigation, I talked to the framing, the general contractor, the site guy. And it was determined that they had some site challenges and grading issues which forced some grading. You can see actually that center drain, which wasn't part of the original design. They had to raise up the structure to get it pitched back a little bit. That includes the slab within the garage. So inadvertently, the foundation guy took it upon himself to correct the situation that the site was challenged by. Unbeknownst to us, he raised it up a substantial amount, maybe a foot or more above what he was expecting to. That changed all the dimensions. So unfortunately, the building or the structure is built identical to the plans, but it was actually elevated up by the foundation contractor, unfortunately. The second thing that Mr. Hopkins asked me to do was to investigate to see if there was any feasible means of modifying the structure so that we could bring it into compliance. And I think you can see, and it's pretty obvious, that the only way to change or modify this structure would be to take the full roof system off down to the eaves or the top plates of the original first floor and rebuild the whole thing by shrinking or dropping the pitch. Be a pretty substantial change. And that's why we are here in front of you today to respectfully ask for consideration of an adjustment. One of the main things too, that I would like to emphasize, when you talk about height in structure, you know, there is a flat roof. There is a relatively flat pitched roof. This is a steeped pitched roof, so you can see the small triangle that's in violation. We feel that that should be factored in when considering the adjustment to this previously approved variance. So Sean can continue his presentation. And if there's any questions you have from my end, from an architectural standpoint, I'd be glad to answer them.
We go to the next slide. And I also want to make clear, again, it was through no fault of Dave and the contractor thought they were doing a good thing. But this was not a deliberate effort to flaunt the decision that was previously issued by the zoning board appeals. No benefits accrue to me as a result of this modification. So it is important to note, there's one particular property owner who has opposed this in the past. I believe she's here this evening. There is a pretty good row of arborvitae that are actually in her backyard. And although she doesn't know this, the previous owner who lived at that house had some concerns when a tree was torn down literally about 15 or 20 years ago at the end of my driveway. Based on that, I actually paid for a portion of those arborvitae. She does not know that predates her ownership, but it does provide a nice visual screen. As you can see, her existing fence through no fault of her own. If there's some additional screening that she would deem acceptable, I would gladly implement it. Whether it's landscaping, fencing, a combination of thereof. I'd gladly appreciate the opportunity to have that discussion with her. Dave could be there as well. And I would implement whatever she wants that is reasonable in nature. So I want to make that clear for the record. Next slide. In terms of the balancing test in the five criteria, when you think about what doesn't comply with the code, that small, tiny little triangle, I think it's tough to argue that that will result in undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. I don't think it's substantial, given again, that little, little triangle that exceeds. There really is no feasible alternative. Basically, to take that roof off, lower the height and start over would basically mean that I'm losing my entire investment in the garage. To date, I've spent approximately $80,000 in making that improvement. Right now, it's on hold because obviously I have to get this issue addressed. Next slide. Talked about substantial. In terms of whether it will result in adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions, again, I think it's minimal. It is important to note it's a type 2 action pursuant to seeker. And then finally, the fifth criteria, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. As an owner of the property, I am charged with knowledge of the zoning code. And in fact, I came here and did receive a variance to allow a garage height of 22 feet. So I would acknowledge it's self-created, but it wasn't my intention and it wasn't a result of my effort. Meaning literally two things happened. Number one, somehow the building permit was issued at 23 feet. And then number two, the contractor thought he was doing a good thing to improve drainage conditions. And it turned out he was not aware of the height limitation. I finally want to note that if, and it's not, if this was an attached garage, it could actually be the same height as the house, which is up to 35 feet in the R3 zoning district. So again, I want to express or I want to extend the opportunity to have a discussion with the adjoining property owner. It's my understanding that she's requested that this be adjourned and left open, provide some adequate time to prepare in more detail. That's fine with me. All I'd like to do is open the line of communication and see if we can work this out. I will do whatever is reasonable to try and improve the situation. And I would ask that when we come back next month, that you grant the request of relief. If there's any questions about the history of this project or how we got to where we were today, either myself or Dave would welcome the opportunity to address them. Thank you.
When was the property, when was the garage installed, built?
The garage was built two years ago and the siding was done last year. And then the driveway and drainage was finished this year.
And then when did you become aware of it exceeding the variance?
At least a year ago. The problem was until the driveway was in, we couldn't get the exact measurement of the finished grade. Dave actually brought a ladder out and actually measured it himself because he's an architect. And that happened in about August. And then I did meet with Mr. Ulotowski and we filed the variance application.
Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this only because, in my opinion, the only affected neighbor, not the neighbors that sent letters, but the only affected neighbor is the neighbor on the picture here would be to the right. And I think you should have an opportunity to talk to that neighbor and see what you can work out.
The only thing I would ask, Mr. Schubert, is I believe there are a couple of their neighbors here. I'd at least...
I was just going to make that comment. Before you bring the motion, we should make sure there's anybody else who wants to be heard.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, any member of the audience here to speak on this item?
Good evening, zoning board members. My name is Heidi Zeimer. I live at 352 Ree Street, which is the adjoining property to 21 Forest Stream. And I would like to respectfully request that this decision be postponed until at least the next meeting. I am aware that the person who filed the appeal, my neighbor, did so after the deadline had passed of September 12th for filing the appeal. He actually filed September 25th. And I think that the other factor coming into this is I've had no time to prepare. Although this has been ongoing since 2019, I only received a letter about this variance request on this past Saturday. So I didn't even have the full seven days' notice to do anything about it. I also just want to point out, I am open to discussion to resolve this issue with my neighbor. I have never said that I wasn't. But his continued progress on the building, despite my objections to what was happening, many times permits were not issued until after work had begun on various aspects of the building. The fact is, the first criteria about the significant harm. Yeah, yes. Detriment to nearby properties, I would like to say that last year I challenged my assessment and I based it on the fact that this garage was put up in excessive height to what the actual variance that was granted. Moreover, I had my property surveyed immediately after the building was roughed up and roughed in, whatever you call it. And my surveyor found that the three-foot property line setback had been... It's like 2.9, he's over the three-foot according to that survey. I think it would have helped him if he would have surveyed his site for this building before he went ahead and built it because it's now over the three-foot line between our properties. I did win that challenge to my assessment based on the fact that the excessive height and the fact that he was now, this would cause problems. There's also a utility pole on my property that is now extremely close to this garage, which poses probably a hazard more to his garage than to my shed. And I find it ironic that when he was talking about the Garden Parkway property and the fact that the windows in that building, that accessory structure, wouldn't be facing the neighbor, the windows on the second story of this garage looked directly into my bedroom because of this height. And because of the closeness between these two buildings, it's very uncomfortable when I open my shade every morning and I'm looking into the windows of this second-story garage. When he originally told me back in 2019 that he was replacing the garage that was attached to his home, that he had failed to keep up and became very neglected and derelict, he just said he was replacing the garage. And because I was trying to be a good neighbor, I never questioned what replacing the garage meant until I found out this was the result. So again, because of the lateness of the notification I received, because of the lateness of his submission of this agenda item for this meeting, I would request that this decision be postponed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other member of the audience here to speak on this item? Please come to the podium.
Members of the board, my name is Thomas Knab. I am here with my wife Judith. We live at 21 Forest Stream, directly across the street from Mr. Hopkins' property. I'm a retired construction and real property lawyer. And I always wondered why this, now that I heard about this, why this building ended up being two feet 4 inches taller than the variance granted. And based on my dealings with construction companies and everything, and anything like this could and will happen. And I don't believe that Mr. Hopkins should bear the responsibility for that because these are things that you probably see all the time. But this garage and the driveway and the siding that Mr. Hopkins has recently done have, I believe, greatly increased the value of his own property and also the property of the people on the cul-de-sac. It looks much sharper, much better, more modernized. And so we are in favor of the variance. And I would just simply point out that the height of the roof, as far as I can tell, doesn't affect the height of the windows for which a variance was already granted on a 22-foot structure. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Marrera. I am Sean's neighbor to the right, directly to the right of his house. I live at 346 Ree Street. And we, our home and our family is in support of the variance. So we can see his garage, that was my white fence slightly to the right in the image. Right out of our back door, we are in support of the increase in value to his home and property, but also to the neighborhood as well. This is a great community. And we're all very supportive of this addition that he's made. And we think it looks excellent. So very happy to support this variance. And with the minimal impact of that height, it seems like a very substantial request to make a change to that with the investment that he's already made. Thank you.
Eric Sprigle, I live at 27 Forest Stream. For the last 13 years, I've also worked in this community for the last 20 years. I live directly next door to the left-hand side of Sean. I'm the one that's most directly impacted, not anyone else out here. When I walk out, I see it. When I walk out of my garage, I see it. From my house, I see it. I have no issue with the variance. It's not an undesirably change to the neighborhood. It's no adverse effect on us. It's added value to the community. And I don't see the height, the increased height, to be substantial at all. I'm also very excited that I can appeal my assessment. I got one smile. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Mr. Hopkins, I will give you the courtesy to respond.
The only thing I would note is the adjoining property owner, the Zeimer, is here. I want to give her my cell phone number, it's 510-4338. Again, I want to express that I'd like to meet with her before next month's meeting, see if we can resolve this. I don't want her to be upset with what's on my property. And any reasonable accommodation that she would like us to make, I will certainly strongly consider. Thank you.
Thank you. And remember, streaming live on YouTube, so you don't know how many people you do... And remember, we're streaming live on YouTube, so you don't know how many people you just gave your phone number to.
May I make a motion to adjourn now?
Yes, you may.
I'll make it. I move to adjourn to the next meeting.
Motion.
Mr. Hopkins has an opportunity to meet with Ms. Zeimer.
All right, motion to adjourn by Member Schubert. Is there a second? Second by a member Phillips, all in favor for adjournment? Aye. Any pos? All right, that item is now adjourned. The next item on tonight's agenda is 5 Twilight Lane, Grammy River Sea Park Development.
Good evening, once again. Sean Hopkins on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to keep this presentation very brief because all it is is simply a variance that was previously granted, some timeframes expired, and we're back seeking the exact same relief that was granted by this board on January 24th of 2017. So this is a portion of a much larger parcel that was formerly known as 9434 Transit Road. It was 61.26 acres in size. There had been plans filed with the town over the course of a decade for an approximately 100-lot residential subdivision. As a result of wetland constraints and other technical considerations, it became apparent approximately a decade ago that that subdivision was not going to occur. At that point in time, my client approached the town of Amherst to see if they would be interested in acquiring that property as parkland. And low and behold, they were. So they acquired 59.98 acres in property in exchange for 4.78 acres on 1047 Campbell Boulevard. That contract was entered into with the town board, did contain language that allowed my client to preserve one lot and one lot only. 1.2 acres in size at the end of Twilight Lane that would be serviced by a driveway. The deeds memorializing that transaction were recorded approximately a decade ago on December 31st in 2016. And as a result, all but this one lot became public parkland. Next slide. The variance that was previously granted, because this is at the end of a public right-of-way, the lot has 50 feet of frontage. And per strict compliance with Section 362B of the zoning code, 60 feet would be required. It is important to note the lot itself.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yeah.
It's a correction, 65 feet.
65 feet is required, thank you. The size of the lot itself is 55,800 square feet, which is about 660% larger than the minimum lot size in the R3 zoning district. Next slide. It's a copy of the plan, so that much larger area which you can see is what was donated to the town. There you can see Twilight Lane, that is an existing public right-of-way with a width of 50 feet. The variance that was granted previously in 2017 was to allow a deviation of 15 feet because obviously that's all the frontage we have there. Next slide. The copy of the decision letter that was issued, next slide. So the other aspect of this, why did this not occur? We finally have entered into a contract to sell this lot. However, immediately after the ZBA granted the relief, we were not in a position to move forward with the conveyance. Once that occurred, we had to get a wetland permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. We're preserving wetlands in those hatched areas. We had to get a floodplain permit from the Town of Amherst Building Department. All of that has finally occurred. We now finally have a purchaser who's entered into a purchase contract. Next slide. And based on that, we're asking that you just simply grant the exact same relief again. I did provide detailed justification in Exhibit 2 of the application. Again, the benefits to be realized by the applicant via the granting of the requested variance versus any resulting detriments, the health, safety and welfare of the surrounding neighborhood or community. Here, the benefits are quite clear. In the absence of this board granting the relief that was previously granted, we cannot develop this lot. This lot basically becomes worthless, would not be, would not be consistent with the agreement that was entered into the town, entered into with the town board all the way back in 2016. The construction of one single-family home on a lot with 50 feet of frontage will not result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. This is not a substantial request, given that it will not result in any adverse impacts. There are no feasible alternatives. 50 feet is the width of the Twilight Lane right-of-way. We're stuck with that. It is a Type 2 action pursuant to seeker. And then finally, I think this one actually could be argued that it's not a result of self-created hardship based on the fact that this is part of an overall agreement that was entered into with the town all the way back in 2016 and that the exact same relief was requested and that we only have 50 feet of frontage on Twilight Lane. So with all that being said, respectfully, we would ask you grant the requested relief so that we can move forward with consummating the sale of this property in accordance with the fully executed purchase contract. If there's any questions, I would welcome the opportunity to address them.
All right, thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for the applicant? Any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Rosie Spanyolo. This is my husband Frank. We live at 101 Twilight Lane, which is at the direct dead end of Twilight Lane. I just also want to start by saying the land that was already devied out has the driveway. So if we were to park our vehicle in front of our own property, from curb to the fence is actually only 46 feet. We measured that before we came. If we park our car in front of our property, it goes then in front of their driveway that is already pre-dug out with gravel and it goes into the driveway. So it's also a concern of privacy at that point. We have two small boys. So that dead end from fence of the property directly across from us to our curb is 46 feet. So the variance itself is below what is required. That's not a small adjustment. That is a significant variance. According to the town representative that I did speak to on the phone about that, this matter, stated that, and I quote, "We would not be taking any land from the properties, so we would have to extend a Twilight Lane and add a roundabout." Per the application from the applicant themselves, they have stated, "We are asking for the zoning exemption because extending Twilight Lane is not feasible." I would agree with that statement because it would cause more detriment to the surrounding properties. Diving further, another concern is water drainage. We are already nine feet below Casey Road, which is the road leading into our development called The Pines. And if this gets approved to build, they would have to build up the property even more to bring it to code, therefore adding more water runoff to surrounding properties, ours included. We would need more substantial drainage added. We already have a drain behind our home, behind our property, that is neglected by the town and does not work. The development does not have proper drainage and where you would want to build this property is the lowest end of the development that is deemed wetland. We already deal with standing water and pooling of water after rainstorms and adding more impervious surface and grading changes would likely cause even more flooding and sitting water. That could speed up foundation settling and cause long-term damage by nearby properties, including our own. My main concern is that the land in this area is already unstable. I've had serious foundation issues on my property because of shifting soil and I've had to invest a lot of money to fix it. Per an engineer, we are sitting on clay peanut butter and not enough drainage to handle this matter. If this new build moves forward, the additional construction and ground disturbance could easily make those problems worse. I'm worried I'd end up having to reinforce my foundation a second time just to protect my home and family, which includes two small boys. In conclusion, for all of these reasons, the soil instability, the flooding risk, the wildlife disruption and the large variance requests, I respectfully ask that the board deny this variance. Thank you for your time and considering how this would impact existing homeowners and the surrounding environments. I also would like to add that ours was also rushed. We got a letter from the town on Sunday. The meeting is Wednesday today, so not a lot of time to prepare. I've talked to several neighbors and they also could not make it here as they wanted to, to oppose this due to the time constraint that we had to this.
Can, can you go back to the other, yeah, that one? Can you use the, that and show us where your lot is?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I can't, sorry.
We are right here.
Okay.
This is our property.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
I didn't follow the 46-foot issue that you mentioned. What was that all about? You said there was.
So that, so in this description here, it says that Twilight itself is 50 feet. The road is 50 feet. From curb to curb, it is not 50 feet. So at the end of the dead end, there is, the curb stops. And then the neighbor's fence is on its property line. So I took the measuring tape from that fence to my curb, which measures 46 feet, not 50.
The right-of-way width, sir, is 50 feet. That is the land that the pavement is within. So the pavement itself may not be 50 feet, but the right-of-way width, which is the land that is public land, where we have sewers, gas lines, other utilities, is 50 feet wide, which is what they have frontage on.
Okay. So where those perforated lines are, that's like an easement.
But then that still does not help the matter that if we parked in front of our home, it would infringe on their property and that could get into a future battle of yours in front of our property, even though it's a public roadway.
I'm not sure how does that infringe. I'm not, I'm just not following what you're saying.
So if that does.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry. If this does move forward in addition to everything else, in front of our home, there's a driveway already with gravel. And I questioned the inspector when they were doing that and they said it's not my, it's not their problem. I said, but if we park a car, so the driveway that they have now, it goes, my car goes into their driveway, if that makes, it doesn't make sense.
So the driveway going into this parcel.
To the new property.
Extends from the street straight?
Yes.
And so if I parked in the public. But it's not as wide as the street? Correct. So that when you're parking in front of your house, you're within the parameters of the street, but you're basically blocking their driveway?
Correct, thank you, yes.
I got it. Sorry.
All right. Could you come to the microphone then?
So you're saying, I didn't even know there was a driveway there. The driveway is here.
So they, yeah, they have it all.
You park here and the driveway interferes with where you're.
Because it's not in the middle of your direct, the 50 feet.
So what I would ask on that, I don't think it really has much to do with the variance, but given that I don't know if you're going to adjourn this, but if you are, let me follow up on that. I don't think that's meant to be the permanent driveway. That was probably just an construction access. They had to do some filling of the wetlands in order to move forward with this.
So why don't we, why don't we, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for tonight with the expectation that you'll come back next month. We'll make sure they, everyone receives proper notice to that meeting. So anyone who has a vested interest can speak on it and then we'll consider it at that time.
I'm fine with that.
Good. Yes, you can come to the microphone.
Sorry. So are the wetlands an issue or is this strictly, we are just talking about this? Because if this is approved.
So what's, what's before the board tonight is a variance for a lot frontage of 50 feet.
So if that is approved, he is then allowed to move forward with the build?
Well, we were, we're only considering as a zoning board, we're only considering that variance.
I just want to make it clear, the wetland permit was already issued and the limited amount of filling is already done. So there'd be no more, it's all completed already.
What about additional drainage?
Well, so, so we're, we're not here to discuss that. If you have concerns after, after your, the conversations with Mr. Hopkins and whatever folks that's part of this development, you can raise those concerns at next month's meeting.
Okay. Yep.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Second by a member Schubert. Second by a member Parker, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any pos? All right, that item is adjourned. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is two items we've discussed before, 43 Linwood and 37 Linwood. I just want to remind both the applicants and any member of the audience here to speak on this item is that we had pretty in-depth hearings on August 19th and September 16th. We don't need to go over every detail of, of the project. We, we, you know, we received a lot of information during those two meetings. Anyone who didn't have the opportunity to speak at those meetings will certainly hear what you have to say. If you have any new information to provide or any updates since, since the last meeting, we will hear that information, but I don't want to have to go through every detail of this project again.
Right, so I'm going to focus on what's new. Again, Sean Hopkins on behalf of the applicant. There's two variances before you this evening, both 43 Linwood and the next one, which is 37 Linwood. Greg, if you can walk through quick. There's the actual site, next slide. Photograph, next slide. So the variance that we're asking for, we're asking for a variance for a lot size for this particular request. This is an existing two-family home on property that's zoned R4. As you'll recall, what happened at the previous meetings is there was concerns expressed relative to the back of these properties and what the future use could be, whether it could be parking, buildings, et cetera, et cetera. I also do want to note that the neighbors, some of whom were here this evening, were kind enough to meet with us on-site more than a month ago. Next slide. And there you see where we're going to modify the boundaries of 43 Linwood. The back portion would be merged with the adjacent property at 5195. This is the plan we originally presented, which showed parking on that property. That was vehemently opposed by the neighbors. Next slide. So we've gone back to the drawing board. We've talked to the ownership group and we've changed our plans dramatically. Instead of any potential improvements on that property, we are simply going to install a new fence, leave it as green space and merge it with the adjoining property at 5195 Main Street. We've also offered and will agree to deed restrict that, meaning not only are we making that representation today in 2025, we will make that permanent representation, that that will be green space. It is green space and that we'll install that fence. So instead of parking, buildings, whatever else could have gone there in the future if the property was zoned GB or a mixed-use zoning classification, that is no longer going to occur based on the concerns that were expressed by the neighbors. If you go to the last slide, there you go. Actually, just go up one more. So the condition that we're proposing, the same exact condition applies to both 37 Linwood, which is next on the agenda, and 43 Linwood. The rear portions of 37 and 43 Linwood to be merged with the contiguous parcel to the west located at 5195 Main Street shall be subject to a declaration of restrictions to be recorded at the Erie County Clerk's Office stating that such property shall permanently consist of green space without principal or extrusory structures or parking. It will stay green space, will submit a draft of a declaration of restrictions. Both Mr. Yulotowski and the town attorney's office will review and approve that. Once they've done that, we'll record that at the Erie County Clerk's Office and of course, we'll provide a copy. So I think we've made an effort to address the concerns that were raised over the course of the past two public hearings. The next presentation is exactly the same. I can walk you through it. The variance itself is slightly different because that's a single-family home versus a two-family home, but the property line that we're drawing and the condition is exactly the same. So with that being said, subject to any comments any residents may have, we would ask you grant the requested relief.
So, Mr. Hopkins, I'm confused on what the benefit that the applicant is seeking by keeping this as, as, as green space. So when you originally appeared, it was a parking need. Then you came back last month and said, "Well, we might want to do something in the future, but it's not needed now." Now you're coming back this month saying we want it to be permanent green space. So why is the applicant seeking control of this land and not, if you have no use for it and if you're putting a deed restriction on it, you will have no use for it in the future? Are you, are, you know, are you guys so hell-bent on, on, on purchasing or merging these properties?
Yeah, so remember, it is common ownership. So yeah, the intent is to merge it with the adjacent property at 5195. Now, given that, or at, I forget the address. The goal would be to merge it with 5195 Main Street. And again, the only thing we would do with it is maybe plant some additional green space landscaping, maintain it, make it feel like it's part of that overall hotel complex. That's it, nothing more, nothing less.
Why does your client want a land bank plan that it has no intention of using other than to decorate it?
Just to add the green space to the site. And again, and I think that's best evidenced by the deed restriction. And again, and I think that's best evidenced by the deed restriction. The goal was originally to provide some initial parking if and when it's needed, but we've gone back to the drawing board, and we don't see any time in the foreseeable future, number one, where that parking is needed. And number two, as the residents made very clear, they view that as encroaching into their neighborhood. So literally, it'll be a new fence with green space.
So any questions for the applicant?
And then that change of grade between the Main Street property and these properties on.
Yeah, there's a slight change in grade. I mean, maybe at some point that'll be graded in terms of green space, but no intentions to make any changes.
So any other additional questions for the applicant?
And again, I want to make clear, this would be a new six-foot fence along the back of that property, back of the new property.
And then on the 37, I know we're not doing 37 right now, but what is that little rectangle behind there?
I believe that's an existing patio or concrete behind that existing garage, which is in not very good shape. The goal was, and I'll make clear to the neighbors, because one of the questions has come up, and let's, I was not involved with this project, but candidly, I think what Alloca Development's intentions were way back when, when they did this project, was it would potentially provide an access onto Linwood and maybe accommodate some additional development. Those plans that may have been formulated way back then have gone to the wayside long ago, and that's why that decision has been made. Hey, a better use of these homes is to sell them to purchasers. Alloca has not done the greatest job maintaining and managing them. That's not their business in terms of single-family homes. So they'd like to sell those, simply add the green space, and install a new fence. Relatively innocuous, in my opinion.
And then the fact that these will now become non-conforming lots doesn't affect.
No, because they'll be merged with 5195 Main. So no, these will not be maintained as separate lots.
No, no, I mean the Linwood lots.
Yes, the Linwood lots will be non-conforming.
So, Mr. Hopkins, just for the benefit of the residents who are here today, could you explain the deed restriction and, and what it means?
Yeah. So a deed restriction basically means that you go to the Erie County Clerk's Office, and you record a document that basically matches the statement you made. Meaning, if I come up here today and say, there's no plans for this to be anything but green space, legally, that does not preclude me or someone else from coming back in the future and proposing something different. However, if we record a declaration of restrictions at the Erie County Clerk's Office, that means that any future owner of this site, the town, and any other interested party has noticed that there is a condition that's imposed by this board that says there can be no development on that property at any point in the future. The only way that can be changed is to come back in front of this board. You would have to hold a public hearing. The property would need to be rezoned for commercial, et cetera, et cetera. So there's no intention to do that, but that is a permanent restriction on the property, not only the current owner, which is an Alloca Development entity, but any future owner of that particular property. Mr. Schubert can probably give a better explanation, but.
I would not. Yeah, that was good.
All right. Is there any other questions from the board for the applicant? All right. Is any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right. And just, just as a reminder, we don't need to go over everything that we've covered in the previous two meetings. So if there's anything new or anything different, that's what we would like to hear.
I do have some photos for the board, if you may permit. Ah, there's six sets there. Well, there's just two photos of each property. When you're looking at plans, oftentimes you don't get the full kind of perspective of what's going on. When you look at the photos that provided, you could see in the ground. Survey stakes that is showing where the parcels will be split off. And you can see how significant the reduction in yard space is for the two properties. I believe one is going, was it 43 Linwood is being reduced by 33% and 37 Linwood is being reduced by approximately 22% in total lot size. So as referenced earlier, they've, you know, the lots themselves are slightly below MHERS standard lot size, but now you're taking that and you're making it even smaller. Sorry, I came with all the five points prepared to talk. But as stated before, we've, we've been here, it's the third time. The developers knew it was zoned for R4 when they got into it. Like you said, it sounds like they're, you know, trying to move on and cut bait. But as I believe the board kind of saw and understands, there's no real, if it's going to maintain green space, there's no real reason to, to parcel it off. I think, my opinion is 37 Linwood is still actively for sale. It's been on the market now for five months. It's had its price reduced three times. If that doesn't signify a undesirable property and undesirable lack of green space for a residential family home on a residential family street, I don't know what else is. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting us come up here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? All right. With that, we'll close the hearing. Would any member like to make a motion for approval or denial? Are we doing? We'll do, we'll do it separately. We're doing it separately. So on 43 Linwood, we have a motion by a member, Parker, to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by a member, Phillips. Could we get a roll call on the motion to deny?
Can I ask that the, you go through the five criteria before you.
With some explanation to go along with it, please, for the record.
Yep.
Could you, is your microphone on?
Sorry. Whether an undesirable change will be produced by the characters or detriment to the nearby properties, we're seeing the detriment to the existing homes at 43 by significantly shortening the backyards they have. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, there really is no benefit that the applicant is requesting. Basically, it would just be green space. Whether it is substantial, the lots are already substandard, and we're making them more non-conforming. And whether the variance would have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions, I don't believe there would be a huge impact on that. Whether it was self-created, this is their choice to do this.
Thank you. Could we get a roll call vote?
Chairman Bray?
No to the denial.
Vice Chair Schubert? Member Phillips?
Yes, to the denial.
Member Parker?
Yes, to the denial.
Member Gergen?
All right. So that motion has failed three to two. Is there a motion for approval or a motion for adjournments? Motion by a member, Gergen, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by a member, Schubert, is there any conditions set on, on this?
Condition, I can read the condition. Rear portion of 37 and 43, 43 Linwood Avenue to be merged with the contiguous parcel to the west located at 5195 Main Street shall be subject to a declaration of restrictions. Sorry. To be recorded at the Erie County Clerk's Office stating that such property shall be permanently, shall permanently consist of green space without principal or accessory structures or parking spaces.
I, I would request that that be subject to review by the town attorney's office and the planning department, please.
Add that to, yes, add that to the condition.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second with the conditions. Could I get a roll call vote?
Chairman Bray?
Yes, for approval with conditions.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
No.
Member Parker?
No.
Member Gergen?
Yes, with the approval and the conditions.
That has passed three to two. Thank you. The next item is 37 Linwood Avenue. Sorry, anything different you would want to?
No, so it's the exact same proposal, except it's a single-family home. And again, we're proposing the same condition. I do think there's ample justification for the grade of the request for relief, and most partly, for purposes of the record, this will be green space.
I'm sitting here, what you just.
This will be permanent green space. And the condition that was imposed on the previous request that added the language subject to review and approval of the town attorney's office and the planning department, specifically Mr. Ulotowski, is absolutely acceptable.
Is this property sold and closed?
One of the lots is under contract, which was the one?
43 is under contract.
43 is under contract and ready to close. 37 Linwood is still on the market. And the contract is based on the reconfiguration of the lot.
All right. Is there any questions for the applicant regarding 37 Linwood? Or is any member of the audience want to speak to 37 Linwood?
Mary Rigerio, 65 Linwood. I just have a question. You're talking green space. Are you talking green space behind a six-foot fence at David's yard?
Yes.
I mean, that's.
I mean, unless the residents don't want a new fence, we thought, saw a new fence probably would make sense. So we are showing a new fence here. But the residents would prefer that we don't install a fence. We're okay with that, too.
I mean. And it's up.
Smaller fence.
David or whatever, but to me, you're, you're not giving us any green space. You're putting up a six-foot fence.
You have to direct your comments to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. To me, you're not really giving green space to the neighborhood that is residential. You're putting up a big six-foot fence, and then that's what we're looking at behind that.
If the residents would rather have us demarcate that through evergreen shrubs, that would be fine.
And the other question I had is, is there going to be an opening from the hotel area so that you come in and you're maintaining that space?
Yes, if we maintain by the hotel.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right. Remember to direct your comments to the board, please.
Hi, my name's Nat Schnapp. I'm 31 Linwood. My question is, there's a four-foot drop from where the hotel is and the green space they want. So how are they going to be able to maintain that if they keep it as green space?
Thank you for your comment.
Is that a four-foot drop from where the fence is now to the parking lot?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just to put it on the record, and just so we're absolutely clear about what is going to be happening here, this is, the parcel is being split off. Right here is a residential property, and on the other side is another residential property. So allowing these two parcels to be split off and combined, you're in actuality creating an intrusive peninsula into the neighboring properties and landscapes.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? I'll let the applicant respond to any comments.
Yeah. So in terms of the grade difference, if they need to figure out a way that they can get a mower down there, I don't think that's challenging in terms of it being a peninsula into the residential neighborhood. It's green space. Again, the concern that was expressed was the possibility that that would be parking used for something else. It simply will be green space. And that's best evidenced by the fact that, as you did on connection with your previous decision, we're going to record a deed restriction at the Erie County Clerk's Office. So with that being said, again, similar to the previous request, we would ask that you grant this relief as well. And I do want to, again, express gratitude to the residents. They were willing to meet with us. They did make very compelling arguments as why this would not be appropriate for additional paved space. And as, based on that, that's why Alloca Development made a decision to modify its original plans.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to close the hearing for now. I don't think there's a reason to delay this any further, but I encourage the applicant to work with the residents to decide whether a fence or a strawberry or whatever between the properties. Is there a motion on this item for 37 Linwood Avenue?
I'll make a motion, but I just have a question first. You're taking down one fence, obviously. Is there, is there a need to put up any sort of fence or boundary between the green space and the property you're selling?
Not really, in my opinion. I guess I need to talk to my clients, see what the residents want. I think the residents are expressing a concern potentially that, you know, it's going to make this look smaller if there's some row of evergreen trees or something else would be better.
Is there a need to do anything at all?
Maybe not.
That, that was my only question.
No, we thought the neighbors would want the fence.
Okay. That's just a, a thought.
I think, let us take a look at that, and if we can avoid installing a fence, we will. We need to make sure there's survey markers, that's all.
Yeah. I'll move to approve with the same condition and review by the town attorney's office.
Motion with conditions by a member, Schubert?
Second.
Second by a member, Gergen? On the question, so it's both the planning department and the town attorney's office, correct?
Right.
Thank you. Correct. Could I get a roll call vote?
Chairman Bray?
Yes, for approval with conditions.
Vice Chair Schubert?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
No.
Member Parker?
No.
Member Gergen?
Yes.
That item has passed three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item, next item on tonight's agenda is 1040 Campbell Boulevard. Mr. and Ms. Sinatra?
I would just take down. Be happy. Have the green space.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Sinatra. This is my husband, Michael. We're here seeking a variance to put up a garage on our property. We have a very large section of land to the left of our house that would be where we would place the garage to house personal items, lawnmower, tractor, and things like that. We chose the design of the garage to be aesthetically pleasing, matching neighbors that we have. There's two houses to the right of us that have similar proper, similar garage buildings and things. And the gentleman who lives at 1050 Mike Bent, his garage would be right next to ours, and he came over and he spoke with us, and he had no problem with our ideas and things, and thought it would be fine.
All right. Thank you. Is there any member of the audience here to speak on this item? Does any member have a question for the applicant?
How, how are you going to access this garage? Because it looks like it's going to be on the opposite side of the property.
It is. We will put a driveway in going to it.
Where's the driveway going to be located? Could you point with the, like, the?
Yeah. Right here.
Would you need to get a curb cut permit from the, that's a county highway or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a county highway. They'll have to obtain a right-of-way permit from Erie County Highway Department.
I didn't know that, but.
Well, no, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it's going out to the boulevard. It looks like it's coming where that arrow with the 26-foot, is that what you were pointing at? Or should it be the 50-foot?
Oh, it should be the 50-foot. Sorry. Oh, it should be the 50-foot. Sorry, it should be the 50-foot, right from Campbell.
Quite computing. Okay, now I get it.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll close the hearing. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by a member, Phillips?
Second.
Second by a member, Gergen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes five zero. Thank you very much. The next item on tonight's agenda is 1260 Smith Road. Mr. Hoy?
Good evening to the members of the board. Apologize for this being on your itinerary for two previous meetings. I don't read instructions very well. I am requesting a variance. I need 30 feet of setback from my property line. I'm requesting 20. The garage that I am proposing is going to replace an existing detached garage. That garage is, was grandfathered in. I think it was built in like the 1920s. It's currently a half a foot from the property line. This new structure would end up being 20 feet, so it is an improvement. Ultimately, I'm building it. You can see that it is a substantial addition to my current house. I grew up on the street. My family would like to stay there, make it our permanent home. I just welcome my daughter. We're planning on having more kids, and the house itself is pretty small. So we want to put on the attached garage, and that's a 30 by 30-foot structure. We do have a 15 by 15-foot side bay, and that's just for an at-home gym. And then there would be, you can see the staircase, there would be a second floor that would then be for like a bonus playroom, bedroom. And maybe we'll put a bathroom up there. But for the purposes of the initial project, I just want to get the garage finished. That's probably what, all I have funds for, and then at a later date, submit for permits to finish the upstairs. We're planning on matching the aesthetic of the house, making sure that the siding, the colors, all that match. The roofs will match. I actually need to replace the roof on my house anyways, so we'll be putting a black roof on there. Overall, I think it's going to increase the property value significantly. There really isn't a way to put a functional garage on the property just because I have a very funky property line. And since I have submitted, or in the time since I've submitted this, I've actually purchased a portion. So I've actually purchased this lot here, and it's being added to my property. So there's really only this section that would adjoin the neighbor's property. And that property itself is an open field. So the, the property's on Transit Road. There's a couple of houses that are right next to the road, and then it's about, I'm really bad at estimating distances, but it's probably 800 meters back. So that is an open field. I'm not encroaching on anybody. There is a town ditch, drainage ditch, that runs right on that property line. But it, there's plenty of access for the town to get back to it. And so, and with the 20-feet standoff, it'll actually improve the, the current standoff that I have. Unless there's any other questions, that's all I have.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Any member of the audience here to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the hearing then. Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by a member, Schubert?
Second.
Second by a member, Phillips. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes five zero. The next item on tonight's agenda is request for Seeker Lead Agency, 330 Maple Road. Is there a motion to concur, to concur with the lead agency status?
I'll move that.
Motion by a member, Schubert?
Second.
Second by a member, Gergen. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes five zero. Before we close the meeting, I want to address a written request submitted by Sutton Architecture on behalf of the property owner at 280 Getzville Road. As a reminder, this variance application was adjourned from September 19th, 2025 to September 16th through 25th. Neither the applicant nor the client appeared at September 16th, and the board denied the variance request at that time. The applicant now seeks to rehear the matter, stating that they have prepared a redesign response to boards and neighbors' prior comments. For the record, inconsistent with the town clerk's standing policy, applicants are not re-notified when an item is adjourned to the next meeting. It is the applicant's responsibility to reappear. So the, so they were not aware that the meeting, or that the meeting was occurring and the item was under consideration. Under New York State town law 267A12, any member of the board may move to rehear a matter that has been decided. A motion to rehear requires a unanimous vote of all members present in order to be granted. At this time, I will note that a written request is made. Does any member wish to make a motion to rehear the application for 280 Getzville Road?
I'll make that motion.
Member, motion by a member, Schubert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by a member, Gergen. This has to be by unanimous vote, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that has been approved and will be on the agenda at the next meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion by a member, Schubert, second by a member, Parker. All in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
Aye.